Good evening. Notice of the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting to the extent known was provided at least forty eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting, pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of all meetings in two thousand twenty five was provided to the township clerk, posted on the township website and provided to newspapers on December twenty sixth, two thousand twenty four. May we all rise and salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The purpose of Milburn Special Improvement District is to promote, grow, and support local businesses, property owners, residents, and visitors, and to encourage the economic, cultural, and social vitality of the township through increased marketing and visibility, improved and renewed infrastructure, and local business development and engagement. Mister Guilla, would you please take a roll call vote?
Yes.
Roll call rather.
Alexa Clark. Tim Hoffman. Jackie Benjamin Lieberberg.
Here.
Ben Stoller.
Present.
Ashley Schultz. Richard Wasserman.
Here.
Steven Weiner.
Here.
Alex Altman.
Yes, here.
Thank you. Um, next is the approval of the minutes. Uh, you were all provided with a copy of the public session and closed session minutes from the last meeting, January twenty third, two thousand twenty five. That's identified as like attachment one in your packets. Um, are there any comments or alterations that are requested? If not, um, if you'll allow me, I will request a motion.
Motion to improve, to approve. Or improve.
Or improve.
Uh, the January twenty two, twenty third, two thousand twenty five. So, so moved. So moved, may I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Treasurer's report.
Mister Weiner will start us off?
Yes, thank you. Um, attachment two in your packet uh is the expenses as of January thirty one, two thousand twenty five. Our balance in the bank account was sixty thousand, one hundred fifty three dollars, forty eight cents. In a more recent uh snapshot of a balance is on February fifth, we were sixty thousand, ninety three dollars. So um typical kind of early in the year process. I will note uh that we did receive from the township its portion of the executive director's salary, an amount of um fifty six thousand, one hundred fifty eight dollars. So that's been one hundred percent received uh as of now.
Correct. And um the assessment role hearing was conducted last month um in between our meetings. Uh, that passed five nothing in front of the township committee. So the letters go out to, they have gone out to all of the assessed property owners. Um, and so we should be start to receive some of that funding relatively soon, and then you'll see the bank balance go up. But all that's been dealt with.
Thank you. Mister Stoller, township committee reports.
Sure. Uh, so uh, the two hundred and fifty year celebration has been off to a gangbuster start. Um, with a, a, a great start, a lot of different representation. Uh, and that's gonna continue up until two thousand twenty six. So uh, it's gonna be a long road uh of progress to get there. Uh, and also is gonna coincide with the uh World Cup as well, and then we have the Olympics in two thousand twenty eight here in New York. So it's gonna be uh, or it's in L A, it's gonna be fun. Um, second recap of assessment role hearing, uh, that's still under work, uh, still in the uh, in the, in going under.
The Sid Review Committee.
The Sid Review.
You said assessment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sid Review. Uh, so that's still in its infancy, uh, working towards uh that with, with the team. Uh, we should have more clarity of that in the uh months to come. Uh, and then the last one I just wanna mention too is uh, we will have an ordinance uh prohibiting political party chairs from serving on municipal committees uh to remove any uh perception of uh any types of uh prity, whatever the case may be. But uh, the township has a consensus on that. That's my update.
Thank you. Uh, Mister Hoffman, business administrators report.
Good evening, everybody. I don't have too much to report this evening. Um, but the first thing I just wanna bring to everybody's attention is something that was brought up at a recent township committee meeting. The township will be uh planting twenty eight tree trees throughout the township as part of its efforts this year. Um, and I also just wanna pre- provide a brief update. Last night, we had a public information session on the Taylor Park Gateway Project, which is just at the very entrance to Taylor Park coming off Milburn Avenue. Uh, so we had Spiesel Architects here last night to give a presentation over what the scope of the project looks like. Um, and just to have a, an information session with the public on some ideas about how that project might be moving forward in the months to come. Um, that's the fruits of the, some of the downtown area vision plan that, a process that started many years ago. And it might be a really good opportunity for continued growth with the Main Street Transformation Grant Program. Um, that is an opportunity that's out there uh being part of Main Street, uh, the Main Street Program. Uh, so that's something that we're looking forward to. It's a phase, this is just phase one of maybe more projects to come. Uh, because it's just the very, very entrance to the Taylor Park uh coming off Milburn Avenue. Uh, so looking forward to seeing what comes next with that.
What, do you know, have a date for the next uh information session? Or will, is it on the, is it on the website for anybody that wants to review it?
So right now, the presentation's on the website, and tomorrow, the uh actual public information is what we had on Zoom. That will also be visible on YouTube uh starting tomorrow. So if anybody wants to go see what that presentation looked like, it will be there on the website.
Okay, and is there any other uh public information follow-up sessions scheduled?
Not at this point. So the, the conversations last night were overwhelmingly very positive. So we're uh ultimately, this will then get presented to the township committee for, for next steps. Um, hopefully sometime in March.
Is there a, is there a timeframe? One, I know it's still being discussed, but are they trying to do it?
Speaking to the microphone.
Is the town trying to do this for the summer or?
So depending on the timelines, it would have to get approved and then go out to bid. So that, that process might take some time, but the idea would be if everything goes ahead in the next months, that some of the construction be happening, starting late spring, early summer.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add that it started from the vision plan, which was circa two thousand twenty, twenty one. Anyway, that was, anyway.
Yeah.
Little history.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's good to be able to see po- positivity around this project moving forward.
Thank you, Mister Hoffman. Mister Slattery, Bear Properties versus Milburn Township, a case status.
Sure, good evening, everyone. Uh, there was a case management conference in the case, I believe it was a week ago today. Um, a case management conference is when you appear before the judge, you kind of explain what's happened in the case since your last appearance, any problems or issues that may arise, and then the judge usually sets a schedule going forward for additional deadlines. Um, there's no order setting any of the, that scheduling right now on the docket. Uh, but my understanding is there's gonna be another case management conference sometime next month, at which point we might get those dates. Um, hopefully, uh, I will keep the board apprised of anything that happens in the interim. And uh, and if, if nothing, then we'll have another update next month.
Thank you very much. Amanda Dean, marketing and events.
Good evening, everybody. Um, so of all that's reported on, I will be as brief as possible. Um, we have two part-time staffers that have uh joined the team. Uh, one is uh Zach Minter. He is a local Milburn resident. Um, and a recent rat of temple. He specialized, specialized in media studies and production. So he's gonna be helping us um social media, um event outreach, all kinds of things, including um helping with public space management. So what we had done is initially, there were the two different jobs that you all had supported to have. One was a marketing assistant and one was someone to help us with Town Hall Plaza. So we ended up taking both of those together, kind of making two of the same position. And so the other person that um we've hired is Corinne Mahoney. I think a lot of you know her, she's helped us out over the last probably year and a half or more. Um, with different events, she worked for Real Style Exchange, one of the local salons for about three years. And she's just been a, a great resource for us. So we're really glad that uh she was available, and uh I think the two of them are gonna make a great team. So Zach started on Tuesday, uh started onboarding him, and then Corinne is gonna start next Tuesday, and then we'll get into a regular schedule. But um it's, it's gonna be great. It's gonna allow us to do a lot more and be more consistent with a lot of things, and certainly alleviate Steve and I in the summer, which will be nice as well. So looking forward to having you all meet them. And then Restaurant Week. So um as a reminder, it's March twenty fourth to the thirtieth. Um, we have twenty six restaurants signed up as of today. I anticipate another ten to sign up. Um, I have a lot of follow-up to do. Um, and then some new businesses to note. Um, Thai House is now Thai House Tokyo Sushi. It's, it's excellent. Um, they've built out the dining room. If you haven't been there yet, I highly recommend it. Um, and the staff are just lovely. I went over there to recruit them for Restaurant Week, and then we ended up having a whole sit-down, which I'll, I'll go over. Um, but they're gonna participate, they're really excited about it. The Simple Fair has signed up, and I'm working on several new businesses as well.
Can I just ask one question?
Yeah.
So Thai House is now, is now called Tokyo Sushi, or they combine both concepts?
It's combined, Thai House Tokyo Sushi.
Okay.
New owners, expanded menu.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, yeah. Kevin, it, he has another business. I think they still live in town, um, but he's no longer, or at least working there. I don't know if he has a portion of it or anything.
Where is it located?
That's in the alley, right?
Right by.
Right, right, behind Springbourn by Goldberg's.
Goldberg's.
The back door.
Yeah.
They put the takeout window as well, right?
I don't know about a takeout window, but they.
Window.
They put in several windows.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I, I was there uh last night, and there were people dining. So it's great, cuz there wasn't any dining before. Um, and then we're working with seven different uh Instagram influencers to promote Restaurant Week. So I've, have been talking to all them this week, um, and then I'm gonna be working on the schedule of um when those videos are gonna be posted. Um, I just have to get the rest of the specials and the final sign-ups from the businesses. Um, so that's gonna be, I will be scheduling those probably tomorrow and Monday. Um, and we're gonna, we're, the website's gonna go up tomorrow. I'll continue to fill that in with information as I receive it. And then we're kind of going gangbusters like mid next week through. Um, so, so that's coming.
Amanda, on, for Restaurant Week, are we putting one of those big posters out like by the middle school? I don't know where it might, or downtown?
We're putting one on Essex Street.
Yeah.
In the island. Uh, last year, the only time we did a, I think it was for Town Hall Plaza, actually, was when we put one on the overhang by the school.
Right.
Um, I can inquire about that, um, actually.
That, that's a good spot.
If they'll, if they'll let us do it.
Yeah.
Um, I know it's sought after real estate. Um, and then we're working with, I, who's it, and, is it NJ Digest? No.
Yes.
The E blast. So we're, we're, we always try to use different um people, um, keep, keep some of the same, but try different avenues. So last year, we had um advertised with edible jersey. Um, this year, we're gonna be working with NJ Digest on a dedicated e-blast, so we'll see how that goes. They'll be able to track everything. Um, and then we have our, you know, our posters are gonna go out, our banners, our signage, paid event listings. So there's plenty, um, that's, that's gonna be happening to support this. Um, any questions?
Is new NJ Digest a digital or a print publication or?
They're both.
It's, it's both, but the um, the service we're getting is digital. They do have a print magazine, but we're not gonna be featured in that, that's a different expense. So uh, we're just gonna try to soft launch it. I think they have.
It's over a hundred.
It's easily over a hundred thousand subscribers.
Yeah.
NJ Digest?
And they got, and NJ Digest.
Dot com?
Yes, I think so. Um, and so we're gonna dedicate email blast over a hundred thousand subscribers. And then we wanna see how that works with the analytics compared to last year. Um, so then they, I think they gave us a pretty good deal on it, so.
Yeah, yeah, so it's kind of, you know, with a lot of these places, you know, we use one project to test them out, see how it is to work with them, what the effectiveness is. And then, you know, we may choose to work with them for Girls Night Out or Town Hall Plaza or something like that. Like.
How do the restaurants measure?
Wait, wait.
I'm sorry.
Take the microphone.
Yeah.
Take the, and hit the, hit the red button.
It's been a while.
Yeah.
Over years. Um, question about like, like, how do the restaurants measure the success? Like you go to like the Tokyo place, how do, how do they know? Yeah.
So one of the things we do um is we always have this on a week when the paper mill is gonna be dark five of the seven days. So it provides people a reason to come in when they don't have a place to go to. Um, it's a little tougher to track depending on, cuz I reached out to all of them, asking for, you know, how are there ways that we could work together to not only promote, but to track? Um, and so some people do put things in their register, so we can then ask them about that. Um, but it's not, it's not easy.
Yeah.
Um, because what we've been working on this is year three, is just trying to get consistency at places. So making sure their staff know it's restaurant, like it's one thing that they sign up and then they give us a special, but do their staff even know? Are they putting a special menu in? Are they promoting it on social? So we try to give them all the tools to do that. That's where Corinne's gonna be on the pavement, you know, step by step with them. Um, something I did do, uh, just because this is a tricky thing, is I reached out to Main Street um that we, our designation to the organization, asking them, you know, what do they recommend? Cuz this is not the easiest thing, and people don't pre-register technically for it. Um, and they insisted to try to work with the businesses directly. So I like, I know Live Breds, they're gonna be tracking things, and I'm working with others. So I, I won't have a full detailed report, but I'll have insight on some businesses that I'll be able to report on.
Amanda, can we consider having uh sponsorships for the event for the week? In other words, I know, you know, I'm always asking about sponsorships and everything, but we are, can we consider having a couple primary event sponsors?
Yeah, so that was an opportunity that we've already put out to people this year.
Okay.
Um, I didn't have a lot of time to push it. So um, that's not something that we're, we're gonna get money from this year.
Okay.
Um, but the whole sponsorship packet for all the events for the year went out in January. Um, but next year, I, I feel we'll be in the position where I can start working on that in October and getting that out to people and getting them sent out.
Yeah, I mean, my suggestion would be to consider having a, maybe, maybe two primary event sponsors, you know, of course with a package, or you know, with a marketing package. And those sponsors for fee would, you know, they, they would get some headlining for the week.
Yeah.
Right.
Maybe like currently, right, we did NJ dot com, a hundred thousand recipients to, to push it out.
Who would say, I'll take it.
Sponsored by real signature realty or whatever.
And, and that business were primary sponsors.
I agree. And now, it's tomorrow, I have a blast going out for the town for Restaurant Week. I'm gonna hit it hard all the way up to Restaurant Week like we did last year. I mean, last year, I went, I had four nights in a row to different restaurants and put it on social media. You know, just keep the energy going. I, it was a great success last year, Alex. Uh, I think everybody up here would attest to that. Lot of positive feedback.
I look forward to trying it out.
I, I will say back to your point, though, getting more stats helps get sponsorship for something like this, cuz right now, it's hard to prove the full effectiveness of it. One of the things that is a support is all of the reels and views and engagement we get on social. So um, that's something that I know the restaurants are really happy with, um, with what they get. And so we really work on equity with that to make sure everyone's represented by an influencer, if they'd like to be. Um, so I can, I can put together more stats on that, that's probably a better way to sell it. Um, is for the social media exposure, but.
Yeah, I mean, I even think just signing up just for the social media exposure is worth it. And is it?
Uh, wait, wait, Alexa, please speak into your microphones, thank you.
Are you speaking to Pete Candia?
No.
The food? Okay.
No.
Yeah. Trying to think of the name.
Tom Levecchia?
I think Pete is the food editor.
Mm-hmm.
He has a great following, even his own social media for NJ Digest.
I think that's gonna help a lot.
Yeah.
And they're gonna customize it to exactly what we want, so it'll be great. Um, but yeah, I'll, I'll be able to report more on that, but we're working with like Jessica Chu again, um, the Tipsy Critic. Um, and then we're working with some new people as well, so.
You might as well say some greetings.
Yeah.
So Alex, I think to your question, it's one of these strange things, right? So somebody doesn't know it's Restaurant Week, but they go into a restaurant, cuz they were gonna go out anyway. They sit down, they find out it's Restaurant Week, and they order the special. How do you quantify that, right? So. Well, where we do quantify is our social media presence. So I think last year, March and December were our two biggest months in terms of social media interactions. March, Restaurant Week, December, the holiday season. So those two months peat, right? And so we go, okay, that's an obvious correlation, right?
You mean like likes or comments?
Likes, comments, well, we, we call it engagements, right? That's everything.
Yeah.
Right, so our two highest engagement months were Restaurant Week and the holidays.
Oh.
So it's like, okay, we're, we're spending money on influencers and social media.
Yeah.
And March was our number one month. So it worked, right? We got the engagement we wanted to get. So that's obviously very easy to quantify because the data's there. The hard part is, how do you know that someone showed up to Restaurant Week? For Restaurant Week?
Right.
Or went there, didn't know, but was happy, and they go back a month later to that restaurant.
Right.
Right?
And we don't wanna use numbers when we aren't confident in. So like that person, I don't know that I count them as Restaurant Week, they were intending to get there anyway.
Have the point of self-assessment.
The exact signs.
Right.
Everybody will want to have to do it, it's, it's, it's complicated, I can understand the issue there.
Do, do we need more, did we have crossing guards? Oh, sorry.
Um, we, we don't really need crossing guards.
We don't need extra?
No, it's not, it's not like that.
Girls Night Out, we do.
Yeah, Girls Night Out.
There they go.
Um.
Yeah.
You know, but no, we don't need crossing guards for this.
Yeah.
Um, at this, at this stage of the game.
Okay.
Um, any other questions?
Well, I, yes, just a, just a, uh, just a thought process. Maybe um in the future, we can maybe tie it into Restaurant Week and maybe some spring launch or something with some restaurants and some of their shopper, shopping to maybe if there's some kind of tie-in, just something to think about um at some point, you know, the florist and the, you know.
Well, I will say this, it's, I'm getting ahead of myself, but um as a reminder, we're working with Opportunity Project again.
Oh, yes, yes.
Oh.
So this is our third year, for those of you that don't know, um, March is Brain Injury Awareness Month. And so it's just been, it's been an awesome partnership. Um, we, I think Julie's gotten almost ten restaurants signed up to support them as they're supporting.
So why don't you explain for some of the members in the audience that don't know about the partnership? I think they would find it refreshing and engaging, so just why don't you just give a little background?
So Opportunity Project is a Milburn-based um nonprofit. They provide services and support for people that have suffered brain injuries. They're located on uh East Willow, down by the Shopright. And um, so what's happened in the past is a restaurant may choose to have, and the, the people that receive their services are called members. So a restaurant like Boxcar will choose to have a member come and help be a host or a hostess for the evening. Um, someone else will put out like Taste Buddy will put out a, um, to collect change from when people are paying. Um, other people will give them volunteer opportunities, and then others choose to give like a percentage of, you know, sales, or they'll do a special, and, and whoever buys that special, they do something like that. Some do just a straight donation. They don't wanna deal with all the uh POS system stuff, and so they'd rather just write them a check for however much it is. So it's just increased as far as the engagement. It's just been, it's just been a lovely way to make this a special Milburn event by having that connection with them. Um, on top of that, um, which I guess I can just, I can skip to, um, is we're working with the uh Milburn um Autism Alliance, which is a new group. It's made up of educators from the Milburn School System. And um, this group is phenomenal. We had a meeting with them. They just really wanna help make the community more autism-friendly and prepare uh businesses and other groups to be uh more friendly. So um, what they're doing, we, we're, it's, looks like we're gonna be in a long-term relationship. And the first uh part of that is they're gonna do a um training on Monday on how to help restaurants become more autism-friendly. And so they have slides, they have tools, they have all these different things. They're also willing to go to a place if a, an owner or a manager wants them to, to work with the staff, to point out things that could be helpful. So that's just another aspect of how Restaurant Week can make the community friendlier, more inclusive. And the, the members of this group, they said it, it's such a relief to families to know where they can go, and that people are at least a little more aware of what, you know, may be coming in. Um, and so they're still determining what the bullet points are gonna be, but they're gonna essentially give restaurants that have gone through whatever training, maybe something else, they're gonna give them a sticker.
Yeah.
To put in their windows. And then we will also note that when we're doing a restaurant highlight, that this place is an autism. Um, and, and the, the language people using now, it's not so much autism awareness, it's autism acceptance. You'll, so you're gonna hear that more often. Um, but this is the beginning. We're going to be um working together, kind of taking uh business category by business category, because they all have different needs. So the next one's gonna be medical. Um, and that, you know, we have a lot of pediatric and other things in town, so that's gonna be the next project they'll start working on. Um, we'll be working on that probably in March, I'm sorry, April. Um, it'll be the same thing, one of those tailored things, webinar, that kind of thing. And then we're looking at, um, you know, them being able to do things at Town Hall Plaza in the summer. And obviously, we'll be looking for their guidance as well, as things that we can add or tweak to events to, to make them, you know, more inclusive. Um, so they're just phenomenal. Um, these ladies, we'll have to have them come at some point and report, um, but another great resource for us. Uh, so really proud of that. Um.
Is, is, is it, is it?
Into the microphone.
It's the teachers. It's the teachers, so um, uh, there's like, it's four of these uh women, one's been there, I think, ten years or more. And um, so they're just really passionate about what they do.
Wow, that's great.
And um, one of the, one of the young women works with students. She actually, part of her job is to bring them out for like an outing or a day trip. We're gonna go to the grocery store, we're gonna go here, we're gonna go there. So this is gonna give her a, a longer list of places.
Life skills.
They can go.
Definitely, but, maybe do, even do one of the nights at the Township Plaza.
There's, there's life skills.
With a banner, you know, autism acceptance banner.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna do a sensory event, right?
Yeah.
So low lighting, low music, um, that's something that, there's actually a lot of sensory parks now around the country. Um, so we're gonna work with them for a special night just for autistic youth. Um, also, uh, Erica Russo, who's our liaison at M and T Bank.
Yeah.
She has a severely autistic daughter, and she's very involved in, in the autism community. She's setting up a date for the students to come to M and T Bank on Main Street and do a banking exercise, teaching them how to write a check. You know, how do you actually interact at a bank? Um, because some of them also, there's a, Erica told us, there's an app that most banks are now using where um you use pictograms to tell the banker what you're trying to do, if you can't verbally communicate.
Yeah.
So you can just show them, you know, I wanna deposit a check, this is the, you know. So there's a whole lot with this autism uh group, that I think we are gonna be very interactive. Businesses are gonna be.
If you, if you give me a little write-up, I'll do it at one of the uh weekly uh, well, when it happens, so I can, it's a feel-good story. It gives a little feedback to the bank as well, but for hosting, uh, it's just part of, you know, everyone working together.
I think um, once we have a couple business uh restaurants that are kind of going through that process, that'll be a good time to highlight it. Cuz I think it'll encourage others to step up.
Absolutely.
I also think, you know, things like this, people don't wanna admit they don't know what to do. It's a, it's a scary thing. So I think, you know, even if we don't have a lot of people at the webinar, we're gonna send it out to everybody, so they can watch it. you know, in their their leisure and and make decisions on their own. So um, yeah, so this is, this is really just the beginning of this, um, but it's making us stronger, so.
What, what great work. Really great work.
Yeah.
Great work. I don't know if you're aware, but Milburn High School has a life skills.
Yeah.
Like area, they they have a like a ma- like a makeshift, like a like, almost like an apartment uh where the, where the students have access to like a kitchen. And it's, it's like you walk in and it's like, that's what it looks like, it's where, so they're, you know, how do they carry themselves after they leave uh school? And it's a big part of that.
It was coordinated.
Yes.
Roger.
Roger, yes, Roger. I asked you, Roger's the right guy.
He he brings in um a bunch of kids and they order at Taste Buddy, usually like three times a year.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and they definitely go to the Megal pantry. It's really great. Yeah, Roger's great.
So plenty more to come on that. Very exciting. Um, okay, Lunar New Year, just be very brief on this. Um, so we've been, we've been working for several years trying to get the business community more engaged with the festival. Um, and
Which is this Sunday?
Which is this Sunday. Um, and so we, we reached out, cause you wanna go to the source. So we reached out to the um Chinese um as- uh association in town and asked them for tips. You know, whether it's product offerings or um, you know, customer service, things like that. They put together a beautiful document. I think you've all received it. Um, but the things that they highlighted um with with detail were understanding uh the cultural significance of the Lunar New Year, preparing your business environment, effective marketing and promotional strategies, and enhancing customer service. And um, you know, a lot of that does apply to Lunar New Year, but if you look at the principles, they really apply across cultures and year-round. So um, you know, we look forward to to do more uh with this, but it, they really did a beautiful job.
And it's on our website and we've been putting it out.
We've been sending out to businesses. Yeah, so that was great. Um, so we appreciate their efforts on that. Uh, the next thing, I'll be brief, um, cause Tim already kind of mentioned it. Um, we, you know, we all are working with all five districts, but really wanted to make um some improvements on Upper Milburn Ave as far as the streetscaping. And that's a long-term process. But um we've added planters, we're gonna add more planters this year, but we're really grateful and thankful to um to Stacy, the forester, who's been putting a whole plan together of trees, not just for Upper Milburn Ave, but they're gonna be in the downtown on Milburn Ave between Lackawanna and Maine. They're adding more trees, and this is just the start. But um it's, it's part of the improvements we wanna make, and so we're really glad they're doing that, and we're doing everything we can to complement it. Um, and then that, that's gonna, you know, affect the look year-round. So um ha- really happy that that's happening. Um, and then I think the last thing, um just a quick overview, uh Steve talks a lot about the service requests that we get. And um, so he asked me to do a little review of one that I went through. So when I went to see uh Thai House Tokyo Sushi on Sunday to get them signed up, all of a sudden, they have all these questions, which happens a lot. So then we're sitting down, I've got a water, we're going through this, and a lot of things are the same um with places, but they're kind of cussed into them. So they signed up immediately, um, and then they're talking about how they're trying to promote things. So I'm suggesting you might wanna uh sponsor something in the paper mill, playbill, get people to come eat at your place. They're very excited about that, so I'm gonna connect them with um with Cody over there, um, sending them the autism information, the training, um, list of foodie influencers. I felt NJ Hypsturbia would be a good connection for them, cause they're so hyper-local. Um, an introduction to the Chinese Association. And then other things that, you know, as we know, continues to be asked about is signage. So, you know, I'm working with Steve on on how we can get them information. And something that uh happens a lot with the restaurants is English not being a first language. So I happened to meet with Sophie, who's the manager, and her brother Terry, who speaks perfect English. And we were really able to have a great conversation. But, you know, it's a little intimidating to come in to try and fill out a form or something, you know, coming here. So uh they asked if, you know, one of us could be with them when they come and fill out things. So it's, it's helping people make those steps, but I just think it makes it much more approachable and ultimately makes them more successful. Um, and uh they wanna add more overhead lighting in the art alley, like that's already there. So we're gonna see, you know, how, if that can happen and how that can happen. Um, and uh they're interested in in public art as well. Um, and then like what we've done a lot is we'll take Steve there and do a uh a video of him having some type of experience there, but they wanna wait till they're a little more settled, and we'll do that. So these are just a handful of things that come up when you sit down with a business. You know, it starts out with one thing, and then all of a sudden, it's all these others. Unfortunately, we are able to either answer those questions or make those connections. Um, and I've, I've had another sit-down with Concierge Pediatrics and uh the grooming room um in the last few weeks. So similar uh similar conversations, um, but it just makes it a better place for them to do business. So I think that's all I've, oh, tomorrow in Metropolitan? Okay, real quick. Um, so I went to the Metropolitan today to drop off another forty welcome bags. I can bring an example. We, um.
It's on, it's on the desk I saw, yeah.
So what we started about a year ago, you guys actually participated in it. Um, is uh put together these welcome packages where there's promotions and gift certificates from different businesses that opted to participate. Um, some, you know, promotional items like keychains, things like that. And then we give that to them, and they put it in every single new resident welcome bag. So at this point, we've done uh two hundred and thirty bags in the last year. Um, and something really great to hear, I was talking to the um one of the property managers, and I said, well, how are they being received? And she said, these people love these bags. She said, someone didn't get theirs and came to them and said, everyone else is talking about their bags. Why don't I have a bag? Yes, so it was really, it was really great. And um.
And oh, almost fifty businesses are in each bag.
Yeah.
So you get a lot.
I have to design new envelopes because they need to be bigger. We can't close them anymore. Um, they have at least two hundred and forty of their two hundred and seventy units.
Wow.
Yeah, so they're in a really good place.
That's a big improvement.
Alexa, have you seen some new customers?
Yeah, a couple. And there's definitely a lot more people walking, I would say.
Yeah, I've noticed that too, that it's, it's, the traffic's picked up a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're, they're definitely aware, and we're working, we continue to work with them for other opportunities. We're um, they're one of the main sponsors for the block party we're gonna have at Upper Milburn Ave um this summer, and then um I'm working with them to s- see however we can get businesses to participate in any onsite events they have for the residents. So that's a a longer project, but I'm being put in touch with the people in charge of those efforts. And then we'll go from there, but it looks like we're gonna continue to do the bags, cause there's always turnover with with places a year in or a year and a half in, so. Really, um, really doing well.
And what's at that block party where they gave money and it was postponed?
Yeah, we postponed it. It's gonna be on July twenty-sixth. And uh something that was really helpful is is they talked to me just, you know, briefly and vaguely, but the population there is mostly empty nesters, people that have sold their homes. And um so they have some families with small children, but that's not the majority, so that really helps inform our decision-making. Um.
On what that event is insured like.
Yeah, exactly, so.
Try to use data to get it right.
Yeah.
What, what about the, go ahead. No, no, go ahead, and I'll go after you. Oh, sorry. Uh, you know, I can't remember the name, the Wells Fargo place.
Yes, it was my question. Yes, yeah.
Part, Part Milburn, so they have fifty-three units. We gave them all of their packets at once, I wanna say it was August or early September. Um, I, I'm actually introducing them to, I, I just sent an email introducing them to the neighbors group, cause they welcome all new residents. So they wanna make sure they're welcoming their residents. Um, but I will touch base with them about the bags and see how they're, how they're going. So, any other questions?
No, that's, that's great news. Really great news.
I will hand this back.
And are you getting more businesses like, well, now we have another business. So I'm sure Thai House Tokyo Sushi may wanna participate, you know, in uh in this next set of, you know.
Well, now that I have this information, and once I hear, once I hear back from Hearth, I'll have a sense of numbers, and I'm gonna just kind of remarket this to the businesses, cause they'll know more about the audience and the numbers, and if they wanna participate. So um, so yes, that will, that will, I'm sure they will, um, and it's also a very inexpensive way for people to participate.
Yeah. Great.
All right.
Okay.
So my report, uh, it's mainly this month admin and calendar items. So have your writing utili- utensils out, um, lots of good events coming up. So the first thing, every month, um, I guess really more for Alex's knowledge, we always do uh the businesses that have opened and closed since our last meeting. So one store did close since our last meeting, that was Johnson Fitness Equipment, which is on Morris Turnpike. They uh, they had a corporate real estate restructuring, so most of their stores closed. But they were replaced immediately by a store called Backyard Living, which is up and running already. Um, it's a high-end outdoor furniture store. So I was in there last week, um, did a little preview reel, met with uh their, their manager there, and we're going in next week to do uh one of the larger tour of the town videos. Um, but definitely a cool spot, so that's in the Panera Shopping Center, um, where the new gymnastics store opened. It's a, it's right over there. Uh, we also had two other stores uh open since our last meeting. Uh, Siata Denim is in the Old New Moonie, uh, which is next to Casa Desnatas.
How do you spell that?
S I A T T A. Um, she is a fashion designer, uh, she sources all, all, actually the most of her materials from West Africa. Um, she spent most of her life in Liberia, but she's born and raised here in New Jersey. Um, and so she uh purchases her denims and other design materials from artisans um and vendors in West Africa, imports them, and then um sells them and designs them here. Um, so I, I've met with her, we did the full-on boarding, um, and we'll do another reel about her probably next week as well. Um, and then Bridge Showroom opened on Upper Milburn Avenue next to Classic Cut Barber's and Coder School, that small four-store front business, um, or building, I should say. Um, it's a, describe it, it's, it's a, it's a fashion, we'll call it a fashion distributor. But they go out and source content from larger shows, and then either sell it onsite or sell it to us retailers. So I'm kind of a middleman, I suppose, but um it's gonna be a very nice showroom. Um, they've got operations in New York, LA, Atlanta, um, I think Miami. Um, so a, a nice addition there as well.
Is it housewares, clothing, soft, clothing, women's clothing?
Yep. Um, let's see, so we covered those. Uh, we also have six spaces that are currently under construction. Um, so those are anticipated to open soon. We've got two ice cream stores, um, and a juice bar in downtown, a shipping and packaging business on Upper Milburn, and a swim school and a veterinary emergency hospital on Morris Turnpike. Uh, the old Harmon is scheduled to become an emergency vet, which we don't have.
Oh, really?
Um, yep, so I've, I'm in touch with the, the owner there, the Mandelbombs, um, you know, staying on top of what's going into that, that center.
It's an ice cream uh.
Um.
I, one of them is.
One of them's public, um, but well.
I'm just curious.
Uh, one is supposed to go into uh the old Charlie Brown's.
Yeah.
Um, the other one is supposed to go into the middle unit at the old Fudders.
Oh.
Yep, so that we, we helped get the tailor in on the right. That center is gonna be an ice cream shop as well.
We have three ice cream spots.
So, um.
Which one is the old Charlie Brown's?
Which one?
There's, there's a storefront next to uh Whiskin Willow.
Oh, above, where the apartments are above it.
Yes.
Yes, so the farm.
Some next to Roaster Mills.
Yes, in between Willow and Whiskin, Cam Cuffin over there. Um, we also have two new spaces that are for rent, five thirty-three Milburn Avenue, which is the old Aquas Spa on Upper Milburn. Um, that's ready for tenants, and we're working with the broker. I've actually already sent uh potential tenant referrals out for that one that just came on the market this week. Um, and then we did receive notice that HerMD, which is relatively new business in the Wyoming District, um, they're closing all four of their locations across the country, um, and Milburn's one of them. So we're gonna be promoting that space once they vacate in March. Um, but they, that was not just Milburn, they have three other locations. Unfortunately, the model didn't seem to work for them. Um, we do have two grand openings coming up, which you guys have all gotten emails on. March seventh, from three to five, we're doing um a ribbon-cutting event at Behavior Wise, um, in partnership with the Chamber. That's seven forty-eight Morris Turnpike. Um, and the ribbon-cutting on March seventh will be at four PM. Uh, so if anybody wants to be there just for that, four PM. And then March thirteenth, four to seven, Signature Realty on Upper Milburn Avenue is doing their event also in partnership with the Chamber on March thirteenth, that ribbon-cutting will be at five PM. And I believe Ben's representing on the thirteenth. Um, so let me know tonight or email me if you wanna be there. Always good to have a headcount of our folks. Moving on to business advocacy, um, so Amanda covered most of the stuff that we did at the advisory committee. Um, but we did have a really good turnout. Um, one thing that that came up, um, so you might remember last year, we talked about combining the business advi- the advisory committee with like a bis- business issues committee. Um, and so we brought in the folks from Swim Quest, which is on Taylor Street. Um, they wanna install a sign that's actually slightly larger, uh, what is it?
It's within a foot.
It's in a, within a foot of what's allowable, but it's too big, and he admitted it, he got a sign that was too big. But he needs variance to put the sign up. Has to wait five months to get on the zoning board agenda, and he has to hire an attorney, because he's an LLC. And in Milburn, you have to be represented by counsel. It's for a sign that's a foot too big. Um, and so the discussion really went towards, and this is something really for Ben and Alex as, as the liaisons and representatives. I think there needs to be an overall review of the signage policies in the town. Um, it's always good to review your ordinances. We have very complicated signage ordinances. I don't think anybody wants to change what we're doing, right? We don't wanna have these garish and ostentatious signs, but there are certain things that just don't make sense. Because signage ordinances tend to pile on over the years, right? And there are certain things that just need to be streamlined. Um, this is something that probably Graham Pedo, our municipal planner, could dive into. Obviously, we'd have to come from the direction of the mayor and township committee. Uh, but we had also talked about things like, there's some issues with uh the allowable percentage of a wall, um, second-floor signage prohibitions, even potentially giving people a bonus um for their sign if they incorporate public art, right? Good way to get more murals on buildings, so um, you know, that, that, our goal in this was to bring ideas back to you, to bring to the TC. Um, this is something that we think needs to be addressed, and we're happy to participate with Graham or any of, or the zoning board, whoever may wanna get involved in it, but I think it needs to be a discussion about making signage more accessible and understandable. Um, cause for the average business owner, it's actually kind of hard to understand what you're doing.
All right, I, give me a package, I can bring a car, I love the idea. And for the guy, uh, he's invested his own money, he's got the system of the business open, and we're keeping him out for five months because of a foot on his sign?
Yeah.
I mean, there's gotta be a way to do a triage on that and and try to fix it, I mean.
I mean, one's, one suggestion, one suggestion that I had was some sort of percentage, right? Where you could say, all right, this, this sign is five percent larger than it's allowed to be. Does it really need to come in front of the zoning board in totality, or could the zoning officer say, all right, it's within the margin of error, we allow it? Right? He made a goof. He bought a sign that was too big, right? But it's a foot too big, right? And it's on a wall that's gigantic. No one's ever gonna know, so.
A lot of the, a lot of the old discussions had to do more with consistency.
Yeah.
In other words, a lot of this, a lot of the history of this was, you know, there was a lot of concern years ago that, that there shouldn't be gigantic signs, and tiny signs, and blue signs, and green signs. You know, there was, there was a lot of discussion years ago, and um, and I don't think, and to Steve's point, it was never streamlined. There, there were always, you know, this rule and that rule, and this rule, and at the end of the day, there's a thousand, you know, rules.
But, but people like this who invest millions of dollars to open a, a business here in town, you know, we have to be more engaging. We can't make it difficult to do business. So I'll, I'll pick your brain offline, I'll send this as well, if you'd online.
Sure, 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 sure. But I, I agree. I think a lot of this, when you get into the detail, this it's, it goes back for years and years and years, and uh, and there's, there's a lot of rules, you know, with the signs.
Um, I also had a meeting with the Parking Ad Hoc Committee, which I serve on, uh, back on February third. There were a couple of issues that came up that relate to the city. The first one was in the Chatham Road section, Short Hill Station. Um, there's a lot of construction vehicles, uh, because of the development that's going on over the road. Um, it's created a bit of a parking havoc, and so Alex McDonald asked me to go out and actually count spaces and figure out how many shopper spaces versus business permit spaces are being used, commuter spaces, et cetera. So I actually put together a report for him. We had, we spoke with a couple of the property owners, or one property owner, multiple business owners. And uh, I believe what's gonna happen is there's gonna be a sort of temporary hybrid system where someone that has a business parking permit can park in a shopping uh parking permit area um just to deal with the construction that's going on. Um, so it's not that there's not enough spots, it's that there's just more shopper spaces than business owner spaces, and we needed to reallocate. So um, one of those odd things that comes across my desk, but we got the job done. Um, we also discussed about incentivizing uh business owners and employees to park in the parking deck. Um, talked about this before, it would require an ordinance change. Talked about this before, it would require an ordinance change, but potentially offering some sort of, some sort of discount program for folks that could park in the deck but choose not to, to park in the deck. So Alex is gonna work on that with the TC. And then I know everyone's gonna be happy about this. There will be a crackdown on business owners and employees parking on the streets in the coming weeks. The police have new technology now, which allow them to essentially digitally mark tires. And so they'll be able to know if certain vehicles have fed the meter and are staying too long and then can issue tickets. So it was originally really a manpower issue. That's been alleviated through some new technology investments with PD. And so we'll be able to do that as well, which, and the other thing, there will be a crackdown at the Clock Tower Plaza, Lot One. That area, when there's a paper mill show, especially a matinee, becomes extremely dangerous, double and triple parking. The shuttle's trying to go in and out, you've got pedestrians passing. So we're gonna have a police officer there to make sure that people are not double or triple parking and blocking spaces. Just something that's come to my attention as I walk around town and something to be talked about. So all good stuff out of that meeting. Sidewalk cafe licenses are now available. So those are when you want to put out chairs and tables in front of your restaurant. Businesses can have a sidewalk permit through December thirty-first, actually runs for an entire year. Prices range from a hundred and fifty dollars for one to eight seats, with no more than two tables, to five hundred dollars for twenty-one or more seats, with no more than six tables. So we've distributed that via email the last three weeks. I know the code enforcement officer goes to each restaurant, delivers them by hand. So we encourage all restaurants to submit those applications as possible. It is a somewhat lengthy process because it has to be reviewed by about eight different people, including myself. But you get it in early, it'll be issued by March, and then you'll be ready to go. Similarly, sidewalk sales, so a number of CID businesses really enjoy the sidewalk sales during the year. And so we've received a bunch of requests from people to extend it for a longer period of time. Temperatures have changed over the last few years and it gets warmer longer. And so I want to thank Ben and the TC, they they took our recommendation and extended it. So it used to be May to September, now it's April fifteenth to October fifteenth. So it's a full six-month process, there's no approvals needed. A business can just simply put it out, you know, a rack or whatever it is, and it's just during normal business hours. So at nighttime, you take it in. But it's a good program for us and and I'm glad we extended it. I mentioned MNT Bank earlier, they're actually doing two financial literacy webinars with us. The first one, they're both at nine AM, they'll both be a Zoom. March fourteenth, it's a Friday, is gonna be Financial Literacy and Banking Access, especially for employees. They offer, I think we've mentioned this, they offer banking for folks that don't have social security numbers. So we have a lot of people in the restaurant industry that may not have a social security number. They do get paid, they have to put the money somewhere, MNT does that. And then as well, April twenty-fifth will be a focus on fraud prevention for businesses. Obviously, fraud is a major concern with all the electronic payments that exist. So they're gonna go through that. You guys will all get reminders, as will all the businesses, about those events. I, we do have a little bit of business to to conduct, which I'll get to in a moment regarding Main Street, New Jersey. But I want to let you guys know, I attended my first director training earlier this month. Both the state and national offices were there. As a reminder, there is a board member training, which you should have all received, March eighteenth from twelve to one thirty, and then March nineteenth, the next day, from seven to eight thirty PM. Those are remote, they're the same session, so you just need to attend one. But all board members are encouraged to learn about what we're gonna be doing through the Main Street program. And I'm gonna resend that tomorrow morning, so you guys have the links. You don't have to register, you just have to jump on the link.
And do you know if they're recorded, so we can watch them?
They will be recorded, so if that's the case, I'll I'll get my hands on it. So I'm also working with Mr. Slattery on developing a board training program that we're gonna do at our April board meeting, and some of the Main Street items will be on that as well. My my training was with all the other new directors in New Jersey. And we talked about the revitalization journey using data, especially to create an implementation plan for your downtown, which we do quite a bit of. One that I thought was very interesting was how to create brand recognition through your event. So something like Girls' Night Out, right? Six hundred people, super popular, great coverage. But how many people understand that Explore Milburn puts on Girls' Night Out? That Explore Milburn is a special improvement district? It's funded through a certain mechanism? You know, that what we want, what they're trying to encourage communities around the nation to do is create better connectivity between the event that draws people in and how you promote your organization, right? Because the event only happens because the organization exists, but nobody thinks about the organization. And so that's something we're also gonna attend at the conference in Philadelphia in April, we're gonna talk more about that. Then, you guys all have attachment three in your packets, is Resolution twenty-five oh oh two. So one of the things we're most excited about with the Main Street designation is the ability to access funding. So this year, Main Street, New Jersey is offering grants of up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for various improvement projects or grant programs. So you have to be a Main Street community to apply, which we are. And so I met with Mr. McDonald multiple times, we looked at different projects that might be, and he believes are feasible and that match the improvement economic development goals that we're shooting for for the downtown. So we've decided to apply for funding to improve Milburn Avenue between Maine and Lackawanna. The project's gonna entail removing bricks from the sidewalk, which I know is the thing I hate the most, but I'm sure many people do. Remove those brick sidewalks, replace them with some type of to-be-determined combination of stone, concrete, emulate some of the swales that exist from complete streets, adding, planting, and then removing some excess signage as well. So it'll be kind of getting what we did right in Complete Streets in 2016 on this side of Maine, trying to emulate that on the other side of Maine. The way we've structured it is it's sort of phase three of a larger plan. So phase one was obviously Complete Streets in 2016. Phase two was creating the Art Alley, the planters that you're hearing about now, downtown in Upper Milburn, and then the Taylor Park Gateway. This is gonna be the third phase, right? Making that portion of the street function better and look better. And then ideally, what we'd like to do in the future is create some sort of mid-block crossing where we make Milburn Avenue slightly narrower, try to reduce some of the speeding, but ideally connect the parking deck to the Art Alley, to this new street improvement, to the Taylor Park Gateway, right? So it's one continuous pedestrian experience. So that's the goal. We are required, per the application, to approve a resolution, which will need to go into the packet. So that's, I don't think we need to read it right now, it's been included in the public packet. It's mainly pro forma, all it does is explain that I briefed you as the board, we will be the funding recipient. So whatever grant money we do win will come into the Explorer account, and then we'll have to deal with contracting. But this just explains that we're applying for it, you all are aware, and then we'll have to certify it. So I would request that you take action and do that so that the applications actually do. It opens on Monday, there's only a two-week window, so we won't meet again by the time I have to submit it. So I need this taken care of this evening.
Okay, so may I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash zero zero two instructing the Milburn Short Hills Business Organization to obtain a grant, potentially obtain a grant from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on behalf of the township?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Alexa Clark.
Yes.
Jackie Leibler.
Yes.
Ben Stoller.
Vern.
Richard Wasserman.
Yes.
Stephen White.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, it's very exciting work and look forward to those improvements. They've been a long time on the docket, so.
If if there's anything I can do from the TC to help with the with the, to improve our chances, et cetera, let me know.
I will, I just need signatures.
Yes.
And then I need to.
Yes.
You guys.
Yes.
And then Richard and Tom.
Okay, while you're signing away here, we're at the. We are at the portion of our meeting for general public comment. The public is invited to provide comments and ask any questions at this point. Those utilizing Zoom or phone will have also have an opportunity to speak. Please clearly state your name, speak into the microphone, and limit your comments to three minutes. Prepared statements may be sent to steve@exploremilburnshorthills.org. Please note that this is a business meeting and professional decorum must be maintained. If a speaker engaged in disorderly conduct that disrupts the meeting or is meant to intimidate attendees, they will be asked to cease their public comment. All questions must be directed to the chair, me, and at the conclusion of public comment, members of the board may respond or ask our staff or attorney to do so. Staff and the attorney will not answer questions without a request from board members. Okay, let's open a public comment, let's go to Zoom first, please. Thank you. Good evening. We can't hear you, Ms. Ursa. You're 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 not audible.
Can't hear you, Brooke.
We cannot hear you, do you want to call back, please? Thank you.
We hear somebody in the audience. Yeah.
What?
Just the audience.
Is there anybody else on Zoom?
No.
No, okay. Why don't we just see if Ms. Ursa comes right back before we go to the audience? Just wait a minute, if you'll indulge me. Okay. No, not there, okay, let's let's go to the the audience, please.
Phil Kirsch, Township resident. I'd like to thank all of you for the work you're doing, I think it's great. But the main reason I came was I sent a letter to the Executive Director just about a month ago. It's the first chance I've had to read into the public record. My feelings haven't changed about it, so I want to read it word for word. Steve Grillo, Executive Director, Explore Milburn Short Hills. I recently noticed that the Spring Flowers mural that was part of the Explore Milburn Short Hills Public Art Trail was gone. When I found out why, I was disappointed, angry, and ashamed of certain elements in our township. Apparently, this vibrant, impressive work of art was painted over due to pressure from our residents following a protest at one of the town's businesses. That a peaceful protest, not even against the views of the owner, but against perceived opinions of the free speech of an artist on display could mutate into hateful censorship is a blow to our town and the values it claims to hold. As a Jewish person who was in fact bar mitzvahed at Milburn's own congregation, Benay Israel, I am amazed that the very people who should be the most sensitive to this type of action would indulge in it. What if some group wanted to drive a business out of town because it was seen as pro-Israel and anti-Palestinian, pro-Trump and anti-gay? Where would this unreasoning hate and censorship end? I urge you and Explore Milburn Short Hills, I implore you to stand up against such censorship and to strongly support Green Door, its owner and activities, and any other business under any attack by any agency of hate, prejudice, and discrimination. Sincerely, Phil Kirsch, Milburn. Now, I'd like to add at this time that I believe the owner of Green Door, who has not asked me to do this in any way, is entitled to a formal apology and the opportunity to create another mural for the town, if she so chooses. And I would say to the protesters, be careful that you not become the threat that you fear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirsch.
And I have, for anyone who didn't get the chance to see it, I have a picture of the mural.
Yeah.
I don't know how many people have actually seen it. And if you want a copy of the.
Yeah, thank you very much. Next to go over on the side. Hi, good evening.
Hi, Debbie Frank, Milburn resident. Just a quick thing, I know that when you were talking about the a pedestrian crossing possibly at some point in the middle of the street going from, you know, around from the walkway and all, I will say that as a person who has tried to walk a number of times at the corner where the UPS thing is, cars don't stop. At, I press the button, cars don't stop. So all I'm saying is if you are doing something in the middle and maybe even as a it really needs to be something that catches attention because they're not gonna stop.
Hundred percent.
Thank you.
Jeffrey Feld, live in Alexander Lane. I really have three points to make. Representation of the assessed property owners. I think you only have one representative, I don't know when he attended the last meeting in person. I mean, I think that it's very important that the people who are being assessed have representation at a meeting, and I think you maybe want to look into that. Also, since the February fourth Special Assessment Approval Resolution, we've learned through the county tax board about the appeal process of the special assessment. It has to be done by a prerogative writ that was confirmed by Joan Cody Durkin. No, the relationship, nepotism or family. So I anticipate that by next week, there will be another complaint filed, a new prerogative writ, talking about the validity of that special assessment without any direct benefit report. Provided you, I tried to provide many of you and the TC with a copy of an opinion from Justice Alvin about how do you do special assessments and the need for a special report as to the allocation? Because that's the issue with your expansion for the districts that really do not get the benefits. And that ties into the Case Management Conference that was held about a week ago. I urge the TC and and this body to get a copy of the transcript of that hearing. It was a very short conference to hear what was said. We're now in front of Judge Spencer, she's claiming ownership, it's been like eight judges. They lost all the pleadings that I had submitted, so I had to recopy about four inches, five inches of the pleadings. The township was told to send it in, they didn't. There was a fight as to what a prerogative writ action is. I had explained to the municipal attorney that this is not appeal from a municipal land use, it's a challenge of an ordinance. And the reason I say that, in the last couple of days, this Pel Division issued an opinion about how you check the validity of an ordinance, and they said there has to be a public record for what you're doing. And then in this case, there wasn't. I'm just giving you a heads up that there will be a complaint filed by next week within the thirty-day period challenging the validity of the assessment and tying into all the cases that have been pending since August of two thousand and ten. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience like to speak? Okay, we have Ms. Ursa back.
Thank you so much, I appreciate the courtesy. I just have a couple of questions. I was reviewing in the packet the expenditures for January. If you go back into the expenditures from January twenty-seventh through January thirtieth, excuse me, January thirty-first, there's expenditures for the twenty twenty-four sponsored dinner, totaling in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. Can you kindly let me know, out of the hundred and sixty-one property owners who pay into the CID budget by way of ordinance, how many of those were attendees or invitees at this event? Also, who were the attendees at this event? And also, if there were board members, were the board members. Um, at this event and also if there were board members, were the board members required to pay their fair share for that event? Um, I just want the members of the board to be financially responsible. When you look at the budget. And you put the salaries and the professional fees together. It's clearly. Well over fifty percent creeping sixty, sixty-five percent. And I'm not sure when you now have new hires, how much the. Contracts have changed from your executive director, your marketing director, now you've hired um, someone else to do those. But being financially responsible, I don't know, again, yeah, I know the contracts have changed as far as. Their salaries. But I want to know if their job descriptions in those contracts have changed because we, from. My review, each. Position, they all are doing some type of marketing, social media, this and so it's like. We have an executive director, now we have a marketing director, now we have another social media or another marketing director. So it looks like we have a. Director with an assistant and an assistant. I think that needs to be clarified and. And who's doing what? And if these jobs, what are they doing supplemental if they're not doing um, what they exactly were hired for? So I think that you really should be uh, financially responsible because I think we're gonna go down that same rabbit hole with the former DMDA. Thank you very much and um, Chair, thank you for your courtesy again. Have a nice evening.
And did you get those questions? You can or we can uh, we can speak to Steve when he gets back and and answer them at the next meeting for Ms. Ursa. Yeah. Yeah, why don't we do that, I think? Okay. Uh, is there anybody else?
Nope.
Okay, see no other uh, no other comments?
Okay, we respond to this. You're close.
Can we respond to Ms. Ursa? No, what I was gonna, what I'm gonna do is wait for Steve to get back, so.
Oh, so okay, great.
So, so that he can articulate, I mean, you can, you can take a stab if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm I'm glad to.
Yes, go ahead. I don't know if Ms. Ursa is here, that's why. Do you think she's, is she still there? Okay, Ms. Ursa, are you still with us?
She won't be able to respond.
No, but I can't see her, that's all. I just want to know, right? Okay.
So um, this is the first time we did this. Um, it was a small uh, dinner at La Perola. And we invited um, our top sponsors to come and to uh, thank them, but also to. Encourage them to continue to support Explore. And um, so I may be missing someone, so we can always add to this, but. Her MD was there, First Choice Prep, Men in Regenerative Institute, Art of Problem Solving. Garden State Dental Design, Home Instead, The Paper Mill, uh, Atlantic Federal Credit Union. Uh, I'm sorry, the Atlanta, yes, um. As well as uh, Evan Futter Financial. Uh, myself, Jackie and Steve were there. And um, it was. It was a lovely evening because we were able to talk more about the impact of the sponsorship. And as you all know, that sponsorship allows us to not only expand our events, but expand our business services and support. We raised over fifty thousand dollars in sponsorship last year. Sponsorship money will be paying for that dinner that we had. We already have almost ten thousand dollars committed. This year alone, and it's it's February. So. Um, part of fundraising and bringing more money in is is that relationship management. And that's what that dinner was. Um, and uh, I think we. We could definitely talk more about how we do that in the future, but this was a first run. It was not a huge. Thing and we've already had people renew their sponsorship. I'm assuming that had some.
How much was the dinner?
The dinner was about, yeah, about twelve hundred with with wine, so.
Well, it's bring your own at La Perola.
Yeah.
But um, um, so, but we got fifty-five thousand dollars in sponsorship last year.
Yeah, we had, we had about fifty, we held on to the five from uh, Garden Communities, which has moved in.
So so next time you have a dinner, can you invite me? I would love to look these sponsors in the eyes and thank them.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
I will, I will also say that it was an opportunity, it was an opportunity for the sponsors to network with each other. And let, and and, you know, they're, um, some of them are uh, complimentary businesses. Or ancillary businesses, so it was an opportunity for them to. Um, to to get to know each other in a, you know, everyone is so siloed in their individual businesses. So this was an opportunity for them to be in a social setting and say, hey, how do you do this? Or or, you know, we could, we could do this together and they're exchanging business cards and they're. I'll put my, I'll put your card on my, my uh, my front desk and I will, oh, that's great, I, you know. Uh, Home Instead was there and, you know, oh, we could use your services for an elderly parent or a neighbor. So it was, and I. You know, I I think, I think you talk about, um, you know, trying to quantify some goodwill. I think. You know, sometimes there's not necessarily an immediate, um, you know, react, we, uh, uh, knowledge of what that relationship. But clearly, there was a lot of um, networking that went on and that it was a, and and gratitude for, because um. They never expected. And it was also an opportunity for some of them to share some, you know, war stories and. You know, and results that Explore was able to provide to um. To expedite their uh, needs, whether it be for signage or zoning or planning. Um, that needed some exceptionally um. Uh, assistance, so.
And we, we also had Mary Lima there.
Yes.
The publisher of the magazine you all have been looking at.
Yes.
They have been so generous in their support of this community, the business community. And that allowed for her to make connections with people there as well, which benefits them. So I I think this is something that we should be proud of and um, that we can tweak um, moving forward. But the gratitude there was very clear.
It sounds, it sounds like a great investment, you know, to spend, spend some money, bring in our sponsors, thank them. And get, and and really plant the seed so that they can do more for us.
Yeah, any, anyone that's worked in development, which I have extensively. You have a fundraising and a solicitation plan and a management.
Dan, didn't La Perola give a great deal?
Oh, yes, they were, they were incredibly generous.
Yes, yes, they, 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 they clearly, yes, it was a, uh, it was a, um. Yeah, it was, it was a win-win for everybody, yeah. It was a win. And the wine was purchased at the local wine store. It's like, yeah, so it was, um. Yes, I think it was a, an evening of gratitude on a, on a, an evening in January.
It pays for itself, so it's, it's really.
Yes, it's a question of paying it forward, if you will.
I I have, I have to run, but I just want to comment to uh, to uh, uh, Mr. Kirsch. Now, I come from a long family of artists. My daughter won National Art of the Year for all of New Jersey and I think all the country, really, and she went to art school. Um, you know, I'm a hundred percent about free speech, free expression. It really. Really does uh, bridge a gap. However, when art crosses a line and glorifies terrorism in an environment that we're seeing today. You know, people do have the right to protest peacefully, and that's what happened. I I was actually at one of the protests, it's a peaceful protest. Um, we can't control private business owners from what they paint over or not paint over. Um, uh, but I'll come by the house near a neighbor and and talk to you a little bit about kind of what the artwork. Have you looked at the artwork and what was presented um, and glorified? So it's, it.
I also looked at the Spring Flowers and I really didn't understand.
Right, but but, you know, the Explore Milburn can't control what a private business does to their building. Um, and and I agree, I understand your sentiment. Uh, but, you know. My daughter in college was physically and verbally assaulted. She had to come home from school for two weeks. My thirteen-year-old walking from the middle school till Estrada was. Harassed by someone screaming free Gaza. You know, there's particular things that are happening in this world right now that. Uh, that we need to all be, uh, you know, uh, understand what's happening and. You know, Milburn does not tolerate hate. Uh, and we're, I'm certainly not gonna stand by and watch terrorism be glorified. Uh, which was my take, uh, as, you know, as a citizen, so.
Well, I mentioned that the protest mutated into trying to drive a business out of town. Whoever did that in town shouldn't have done it. Okay, that's the part. I agree with you, what you're saying. There's a whole separate part that I addressed in the letter. That is just, as I said, I'm just disappointed, embarrassed, I mean, this is just.
Right, it's having, it's having all the information. I would love a copy of your letter too, if possible, as well.
Well, the chair has.
Okay, thank you.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
May I have a second? All those in favor?
Alright.
Good night.